Through all of this. I did. I love the success thing. That's pretty cool to get the visuals of. Future.
Yeah. Come to the planning.
And city council is not. This week, they're postponing it?
They are this week instead of next week.
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
So Wednesday.
Hey kids.
How are you?
Good, where am I?
You're right there.
Right by the door.
Exactly.
My new girl.
He probably asked for that ahead of time.
What do you think? What's him? Oh, right on. Does that hurt your daughters like this?
Well. They are goddesses.
Ten ten.
The wind coming up. Things moving up there. The fires.
How big is that today? I read about it this morning and that was it.
Coming up toward two hundred acres.
Oh goodness.
I saw it last night and I was driving back from Portland. I was like, what is that weird light that's over there? And it took me quite a while to figure out like. That's a big fire on the side of that mountain. Where is it?
Larch Mountain.
Larch Mountain, okay.
It's very smoky.
Started yesterday afternoon. About two o'clock this afternoon, it was a hundred and fifty acres.
Yeah, because it wasn't very big this morning.
It was about seventy acres.
Yeah.
That wasn't the.
No, this is fairly well north.
It's still like if you're in. Gresham.
Fern Prairie Camas, north of Camas.
Is there a large mountain over here too?
There is, there is. Yeah, it's Fern Prairie area. That's some good. Population there.
Whatever happened to those fifteen year olds who started this thing?
He doesn't have much time and he's off for good. He has to pay a minimal fee and is it ten years maybe?
I don't remember. I know that the judge acted upon that, but I don't remember.
It's already been five years, so he's almost unpaid.
So, so he got time for it?
He was a child. No. And no accessories either with all the kids that were there. Because there were a lot of them.
Yeah, I look at that every time I walk up my door.
When our son-in-law. Worked it. That was, he normally doesn't do firefighter, fire wildfires, but he even got called to it. It was rough because of the terrain.
I will say this, it was pretty at night.
Lit it up. It, it went fast.
Yeah, when they go up the sides of Steve Drenland and they just.
Now they're bred too, which is more of a hazard than.
Oh, I can only imagine.
With all that dry standing stock, we've got a source of ignition. They're also saying. Invasives are coming.
It's sad. Did you read what they're fighting the large mountain fire with? I mean, are they taking it serious?
Oh yeah, yeah. Number of crews up there and.
They dump him retardant or?
I think they did some air today.
Good.
If I remember correctly.
No, we're talking Washington version. You're in Washington, we're talking Washington.
You're feeling the Oregon side and look across.
We'll just keep you, keep you straight.
I would have taken a picture of it, but I was driving on eighty four and I didn't think that would be.
At night.
It was evening. I mean, it wasn't even really dark yet, which was, it was like this really weird light. And I was like. What is that? And it took me a while to figure out like. That's a fire on the side of that mountain, which you couldn't even see the mountain. All you could see was. The perimeter of the fire on the two sides, the center of it had already burned out. And so it was, yeah, the outside edges.
Who was, where was this on?
Larch Mountain.
Oh, yeah, I heard about that one. Yeah. I've seen it like you have.
It's grown today.
Well, it's certainly plenty of smoking there. Yeah, it's basically just D and R land, but you're pretty close to.
Yeah, they're, yeah. When they're starting to build out there. Scary stuff.
Let's get started. Let's come to order. And Ben, you want to go through the public comment? You see yours particularly for those folks.
Sure thing. To process through the meeting effectively, we ask. Participants to limit individual comments to three minutes at a time and to get our chair Jeff Perkel's attention before speaking. We do have some people that are on the phone or online and ready to get our attention. You can use the Zoom feature to raise your hands, or if you're on the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And then when you're prompted to mute or unmute, it'd be star six.
Okay, thanks Ben. Well, just for those folks that are online, let's just go around the table and introduce ourselves too. Ben?
I am staff to the planning commission, Ben Shoemaker.
Davey Ray. Did the planning do?
Yep, Reckel.
August Sully.
Ian Kizzy.
Charlie Hales.
So, okay, we're ready to start. We have a period here at the outset of our meeting for public comments for items that are not on our agendas. Anybody who would like to. Speak to the planning commission this evening on items other than what's on our agenda already. Can't see any hands going on. Okay. What happened to Mary tonight? All right, our next item of business is the approval of our minutes for the September twelfth meeting. If you want us to look over those, those minutes. Are there any additions or corrections, modifications? Et cetera.
I haven't seen any. I'd recommend approval. One second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of our September twelfth meeting. If all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Okay. New business. And this was a fair amount of information for us, I think, to go through, so. And something a little new for us that can be discussed.
Certainly is. So. With annexation proposals. It's a multi-step process and within that process, there isn't enough time to make a decision about zoning of property that would be annexed. In order to meet the other timelines for reviewing annexation proposals. What you guys are presented with here is a memo that explains some of that and gives some of the options and the process that the city has gone through in the past. Ultimately, what you're doing with this would be providing some advice to the city council on what to zone this property if it were to come in. Where everything about the proposal stands right now is that. One property owner submitted a notice of intent to annex. For that single property, the city's process for accepting notices of intent to annex is to have them contact their adjacent, any land that's adjacent to them, see if they want to become part of the city too. So that the city council can have a better idea of where to draw the boundary. Or what might come into the settlement. And that's one of the main tasks that the city council has to do. They also have to decide whether they are going to place any conditions on the annexation, things like utility improvements, street improvements that would become part of the annexation. And. Be constructed through a local improvement district usually that would raise those taxes for the property owners for a twenty year period to pay back. Then they also set the zone. For the property, so the property owners can know what they might. What regulations would apply to them if they do annex or what their ultimately what their profit potential would be if they were annexing in order to develop. So they made some preliminary requests of staff when they got this to expand the annexation area from the single property that they received. And continue it over for a large, larger chunk of territory that involves something like sixteen properties. And they said, and if we were going to annex those, we would want. Some minor water improvements to add fire hydrants to the red fire service of development in that area. Extension of sewer and then some street improvements that I think was. Well, I'm not, I'm not clear on what the street improvements were. So they gave direction to staff to go out and approach those property owners within that expanded area. Presents to them the cost of annexing and gauge their interest in whether they will be interested in that annexation or not. In order for an annexation to be approved, sixty percent of the value of the property in that area needs to say yes. And. The city council will be making the final decisions on the annexation proposal. On Wednesday. My final decisions, what I mean is they will finalize what that outer boundary of the annexation area is. And they'll finalize what the conditions would be that they would present to the property owners within that area. Once they finalize that area, then the conditions are known to the property owners there and sixty percent of that area or more needs to say, yes, I agree to this annexation under these conditions, so.
I have a question about that, Ben. Sixty percent of the properties or sixty percent of the value?
There's two different, there's. Two different ways to proceed. One would be sixty percent of the voters. And one would be sixty percent of the value of the property.
So one property could be sixty percent of, okay.
And that's, it's the value that this one is perceived in another way.
Okay.
Don't say that didn't, nothing there but cow pasture and?
There's several.
Dwelling on the other side of Frank John's.
There's several homes within that expanded area of the city council. So the one proposing, there's no development at all.
So I figure I've got six months to keep asking dumb questions. So I have one, which is, do we have an urban services boundary that says within our comp plan? These areas we would consider annexing and these areas we probably won't. Because I didn't see that when I looked and I probably just missed it, so.
We do.
Okay.
In the comprehensive planning process, it was established that it'd be our overall urban area boundary within the city area.
Okay.
So currently, city limits takes up about a third of that total area.
So it's pretty generous.
It is.
And typically an annexation like the ones noted here would be within that boundary. So then it's other factors like the ones you're talking about that would guide it rather than is it in the boundary at all? Okay, thank you.
And then furthermore, our future land use map provides umbrellas for consideration of different zoning uses. What you guys are asked to advise on right now. And those umbrellas are very broad too. And so it really comes down to whether sewer is available to the properties in order to, from which of those zones it might. Might best implement your comprehensive plan. What has often occurred in the past is that the county has an R one zone, just like we have an R one zone. And that's where the similarities end. But the review has been okay, counties are wanting, let's bring it in as R one. Unless it's very high up in the water system where it wouldn't have appropriate pressure. And then we downzone that to our lowest zoning, which is SR. So this one is not overly concerning for how high up it is. And so. Layout for you all here is generally five. Paths forward, and I tried to limit that to two, being to follow that past precedent of just picking R one. Or continuing to have it zoned according to the county's regulations. There are problems with that because those are county regulations that aren't adopted within our code. There are problems with all of them. So I tried to guide through that in the memo I presented to the city council for their consideration, which they didn't dig into. Very much in their first review of this was which of the zoning designations that we have would best fit this area. And it's a mixed bag. The ones that provide the most consistency with the existing uses of the area are not the ones that provide the consistency with the type of development that's in that area already that the new neighbor is willing to mess with. So don't have anything. Any easy news to report to you on that? I can go into more detail, but that's what I want to lay out. You guys are asked to provide advice to the city council about what this property should be zoned if it were to be brought into the city. And. There's, there's many ways to do that, but very little concrete guidance to offer on that.
Ben, my question is, are we talking about, is the city council sort of set on this annexation areas? Did you draw it out here?
The, let's see, they narrowed it down from this review. Well. Short answer is, I don't know.
All right, so we don't, we don't know the specific area yet. Now, what it is or how, what its boundaries are.
They tasked city staff with going out to the properties between Frank Johns and Bone Road. And south of the gas line, which is a diagonal line going from Frank Johns to Bone Road.
I thought Bone Road was included in the city.
Hat on the east side of Bone Road. That's within city limits. On the west side, it's not.
Hmm, okay.
And so I know I recognize one name that's within that area. You know that there's a lot of concern for the city's actions and a lot of feeling that. It's just another one of those government things that they're ramming down our throat. And that wasn't the. Intent of the city council when they sent us out to talk to the property owners in this area about the conditions that they were talking about. That's how it's received though.
So again, based on what I saw here, there's, there's only one parcel where the owner is saying, please annex. Right, the Goodman parcel.
Yes.
The others have either said, no, thank you, or not responded.
No, thank you, have not responded, well, have not responded, no, under any circumstance. And no, I can't afford to pay for what you're saying, going to force them. So under those circumstances, why would we even be wondering annexing anything other than the one parcel? Right? Is that what we asked?
Yeah, I just got kind of curious as to why the city council was looking at anything any broader. Okay, yeah, you're not sure. But so there's, so there's a yes or no question about the one parcel. But in my mind, there's not much of a question about the rest. You know, what's the Yogi Berra thing? If the fans don't want to come to the ballpark, there's no stopping. There's no stopping these people, so we know that. So they have that prerogative and that's what they've said. So what part of that do we not understand? And so what conditions might you, might you impose on that one parcel if that was where you were willing to go? I, I had a chance to talk to Ben briefly before the meeting. And I think this raises a good issue for the city, both for the council and I think for the planning commission. Because I don't think we're all the well, that well prepared to really think about how we want to deal with annexations. You know, what might we want to see in terms of conditions? How might we want to see these operate? Would we look at pre-annexation agreements? You know, I think there's just a host of things. And I think. In my mind, I don't, I don't see a real compelling reason to be moving with an annexation request now. That's my personal opinion. But I, but I do have a feeling that we should be thinking about. How do we deal with annexations in the future? Because certainly they're going to be coming up. Yeah. Another dumb question I made, and that is, why do these people want to annex?
That's a good question.
This property is vacant. He owns, they own the property adjacent to it. They had a proposal into Skamini County to subdivide the property. And that. The size of the lots they wanted to divide them into required them to have municipal water. We don't provide water unless it's in city limits, which led them to the city's door.
Okay.
To. Annex and, and develop under city.
Municipal water and city sewers?
That is still under consideration. I don't believe that that was their intent when they were drawing it up.
When, who was drawn?
The property owners.
We're doing it for the county.
Okay.
How big are the lots? Any idea?
I didn't pay a lot of attention to that. I think it's two acres and so four lots with.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't catch that part when I was reading. Okay.
You said they joined, they own adjacent properties, must be inside the city limits because this map says the adjacent properties don't want to annex. So they own the property south of this, inside.
They own property that's also outside. Of city.
But do they own property that's in, right inside the city limits from there, is what he's asking.
But these, this, this map shows no from the adjacent properties, east and west and north, but. And who owns it, but I assume it's not them.
There's was, there's was one of those notes for where their home is located.
Don't do like I do, do like I said.
Interesting, okay.
So I, I, you know, that's a really good point. And what's in it for Stevenson to annex property? It ought to be tax-based people, well, first it ought to be carrying out the plan. Because you've got an urban services boundary, we say we want to grow here over time. It ought to be systematically expanding city water and city sewer. And already have a bigger base to pay for those things. And, you know, orderly development. And if the people that want to annex don't want to sign up for that program, then why would we want to annex? Yeah, I mean, I think clearly this is kind of a case where their desire to annex is to enhance the value of their property. Like through the building. And. That's fine. And that's fine, but that's not the city's priority. The city's priority is to make sure that when we annex, it serves the city's interest. And if it serves the landowner's interest, all the better. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but it can't be a one for, it can't be, it raises the value of your property because you got annexed into the city, but you don't have any obligation to meet the standards for water, sewer and streets. That's a bad deal for everybody else.
I read in here that ten of those lots have water.
Several of them, yeah. I don't remember the details. But that's back before there was sort of the policy of not extending city water. Into those areas.
Throw my two cents in. From my previous experience. The way that we handled annexation was that it came in at our lowest residential level. Automatically. And even if it was currently used for a different purpose within the county. The baseline came in as, as that lowest residential. And then it was on the property owner to then ask for a difference in, in zoning if they wanted to utilize that. If you already had a residence and were using it, you became a non-conforming and grandfathered in, which eventually would sometimes create problems and sometimes not, but. That was just the flat policy. And that worked really well because everybody knew that's what was going to happen and it separated the two things into two totally different conversations. And so that would be my recommendation for if we were going to create a policy that it would. Kind of near that.
And what about services?
Well, it'd be. Let's say hypothetically it came as an R one and they wanted to utilize a denser lot. You know, they would, they would have to agree to provide sewer or water. And so that would be on the, the development aspect. But bringing it in as that lower level, you, you're not required to.
Automatically.
Automatically, right. Whereas if it was an R three. I mean, you would have to tie that in with an agreement to provide the infrastructure at the time, which would be really expensive, which would mean nobody would ever want to annex. And, you know, we, we do need to grow, but we need to do it in controlled. You know, thoughtful ways.
Yeah. I guess I would say never say never. Because, you know, over time, because incentives could change. But would you see a different situation? And again, I don't know this property, but it sounds like it's vacant. Do you see a different situation? But I'm thinking out loud, because I'm not sure if I know the answer to my own questions, between vacant property, I, I own this piece of ten acres, I want to annex to the city. It's undeveloped and I'm going to do a development plan later. Versus my house is on this property and I want to annex to the city. And with respect to the services issue, I'm not so much thinking about the zoning issue, but in other words, you know, we talked about this two months ago, like, when are we going to say you must connect?
Right.
And, and I don't think I know the answer to my own question, but it's something we ought to talk about. I raised that point. So, so if I, I have an existing house, I'm well and septic and the septic's working and the well's working and I want to annex to the city for whatever reason. And I don't have any development plans. Maybe we don't have a compelling reason to say no. Again, just throwing that out there. But if I want to annex a piece of development land to the city with the intent to develop it. Then I don't have to, I don't have to spend any money when I annex, but I have to be under the clear understanding with the city that when I develop, I'm going to need to put in sewers and water and streets.
Yeah, absolutely. And that, and that kind of goes into the, you know, grandfathering and, you know, building structures or whatever would, as you change them or increase them or remodel them, you would have to bring them into the city code.
Yeah.
Requirements, but at the baseline. It doesn't obligate you to like, oh, now you have to do this or do that.
Vakeland zone or whatever.
Or even residential. I mean, if you already have a house there and your setback is different than what the city says. You know, that's not particularly an issue that you have to resolve at that point, only if you wanted to change your zoning or develop it or something.
Right. Those are the two reasons why anybody wants to annex. They either want a higher zoning designation. And/or they want city services in order to make the properties developable.
Right. Yeah. Because water is really the kind of limiting factor as you get out into the county. The requirement for provision of water, if you're not able to do a shared well or something like that. You can't do anything with the land, except the timber.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so.
Well, I mean, you know, if you have an existing structure out there, it's going to be a non-conforming use. It could go Charlie back to a situation where I have my house out there, it may be non-conforming use in some ways, but it sits on twenty acres. And I want ultimately to subdivide that, so you know, it's sort of a hybrid of, you know, currently used or or vacant land.
Right.
How we have to deal with that. You know, my concern is that you bring this in, you want to efficiently extend public services. If we allow too large a lot out there, it becomes much more costly to extend those services and very difficult to break down something that once it's divided and on your lots to go to a higher density.
Yeah.
So it's it's a balance name here in terms of of how you deal with that. You know, and
Yeah, and one tool that Washington County uses is the waiver of remonstrance, or I don't know if you've been using that, but hey, you know, later on, when your adjacent property owners want to develop too, we're going to form a local improvement district over pois form one, and you're going to, if you're going to annex, you're going to summon this waiver of remonstrance. It says when that LID is formed, I'm an automatic yes. Yeah, so that's another tool. Again, the sort of full disclosure to the property owners, hey, you know, eventually, when you want to develop, here's what the deal's going to be. No, nobody's hiding the ball here.
Yeah, I sort of, I think is in Washington, they, that's pretty similar in the the pre-annexation agreements for folks.
In twenty, sorry, in seventeen, no, earlier than that. The last annexation that we did, the city council decision was to associate it with a waiver of protest. Is I always incorrect that it's protest in Washington, not remonstrance.
Yeah.
But you can't protest the formation of LID. And that was one of the conditions that the city council put on that.
Good.
Area. And
What area was that?
It was included in part of this area. It was just those properties fronting onto Bone Road. And they all, well, none of them came back and said yes in response to that.
Well, it goes back to is you annex those areas, and yes, extending city services, utilities, roads is not a cheap activity.
No.
But then again, there should be some benefit in terms of property values to the folks that own those properties out there. And why should the citizens of the rest of the city pay to enhance their property values? So maybe, yeah, I think the LIDs are going to be a pretty or something similar is going to be pretty critical in terms of how you deal with an annexation. And maybe I'll maybe suggest in terms of what you do in terms of size of an annexation too.
Well, that gets back to your point. It's like, you know, yeah, why not just go pull Vladimir Putin and, you know, annex the hell out of the whole area?
Against a lot of wishes.
That's it, there isn't against their wishes. It's just waiting for them to show up with a yes vote.
Well, I think the thing is to provide a consistency so that it's not, well, this happened over here and this happened over here, and so what do I have to do? And there's not a confusion on the part of the people coming in. It's like, this is what's going to happen. You can choose all of these other things. We'll deal with that later. This is all that's going to happen. But what about, no, this is what's going to happen?
Mm-hmm.
And that's that alleviates a lot of that concern that we hear when people come in and they say, somebody told me that they're going to make me get rid of my cats. What? It it's a strange example, but
It's a good example.
That that happens. So, yeah, I think whatever we recommend, I think is, you know, the best thing is to something that is repeatable, it's understandable, it's basic and simple that everybody knows what to expect.
Well, so do we do we agree based on this discussion? That a a consistent approach of additional development following annexation will be subject to the requirements for city services, including water, sewer, and streets, right?
I think if if you move anything beyond the R1, you're half, I mean, that's the only exception where you can still be on a well and a septic.
You mean that you could build a house? That's what I'm saying then.
For one acre, so you're going to you can remain on a well and you can keep septic on one acre. So it's the only place that would be in the city if you had an acre lot.
Yeah, that's always on lots.
Yeah, that's true. That one has its own.
That's given the given the incentives for why anybody's going to annex, nobody's going to do that, right?
It would be, what I would consider that is a an ease on a current property owner's mind, like say they have five acres in their house. And they say, do you want to annex? And it's like, well, what do I have to do? If you tell them, they don't have to do anything.
Okay.
You're much more likely to get a yes than, well, you have to meet all of these things and submit this. They're going to say, no, I'm I'm cool the way I am.
Yeah.
Leave me alone.
Yeah.
So it's really, you're you're not really creating an incentive, but you're not making it onerous on somebody who just is like, I could care less. But eventually, as you start to get those pieces together, because you don't want to do these crazy zonings that loop around, you want to do it in a very consistent planned way.
Yeah, yeah.
And so making it so that the people who are kind of, you know, undecided, if you can tell them, no, you don't have to do anything ever. We've stayed this way until you know, something unexpected happens. That is, that is a huge thing.
Yeah. All right, I see that. Yeah, you may be, maybe somebody's got five acres, they want to live on it for the rest of their lives, and they want their kids to have the opportunity to subdivide it. You say at least get the annexation done, but everybody knows that if you subdivide it and build on it under city zoning, you're going to have to meet code.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's not, that's not unreasonable. So what what guidance does the council want from us?
Advice on which of the five residential zones we have, so.
If I understand correctly, R2 and SR are the easiest?
R2 and SR are best fit with what's currently, the way those properties are currently developed.
Again, we're just talking about the one property, right?
This is for the area. So, yeah.
Or we could do just one property, or we could do nothing.
I would say, again, maybe I'm being too misunderstood, but if there's only one property owner who's interested in annexation, why are we talking about the zoning on anybody else's?
I think because they asked for advice on a broader area.
But would we have a different answer? If we just looked at that one property as opposed to that broader area?
That's a good question. I'm not sure we would.
I can communicate different answers to that if you do.
But I I would also, you know, I'd I'd certainly like to see a question both of the council is, why proceed at this at this time in terms of doing this? You know, one of the things that we've talked about, we'll talk about again later tonight, is this sort of working group between the county county planning commission and the city, you know, planning commission. So how do we take care of those urban growth areas that are currently in the county? It seems to me that there's work to be done here to develop that framework rather than just to sort of take a quick, knee-jerk decision in terms of 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 this particular annexation, which there doesn't seem to be any compelling urgency to do.
Good point.
That's also a way forward, and it's a way that has been used before when the city's just not ready to to make these decisions. Unfortunately, what has happened is the city never gets itself ready to make those decisions. And I think that we're getting for getting ourselves ready this time. But I just put that out there as a watch for you.
Well.
Follow through with our.
Yeah, you can't not make a decision and just say, okay, dodge that one. Someone else will have to make that decision in the future. But no, I, again, I think that was part of our work plan. And I think it's a logical thing to do. We talked about it when we were we were talking about the capital improvement plan in terms of, you know, how do you have the most effective extension of services? Rather than creating isolated little islands out there. Areas that are so you know, committed to large lots, you you'll never be able to extend services out there effectively. Boston.
Well, I think in in that question that you said, Ben, my I would retain my recommendation that this is a baseline, it would be an R1, because that provides the least infringement on someone who may be undecided. Whereas if you're starting to look at each property individually as they come in and then try to establish a zoning board at the same time, it really gets complicated. And again, as the process goes on, you'll get people that say, well, you did this in this one place. How come I can't do that? Because circumstances are different, but I want that. That's what you really want to avoid is that.
Yeah.
I want what that other person got, even though I don't meet those conditions. So I have it so that it's just very base and simple. Like, if you want anything else, come back and we'll have that bigger discussion, and these are the work that you have to do.
Yeah, I definitely think we should avoid getting a checkerboard kind of thing going on.
Well, I think you want to have fairness in terms of whoever walks through the door, whatever group walks through the door requesting an annexation. You want to be clear in terms of what's expected.
The point is, like, just in this example, if, you know, if you only were going to talk about annexation of the lower part, getting support for the other property owners, that they don't have to do anything, is much more likely than saying, well, you're going to have to put an agreement in that within five years, you're going to have to pay such and such a cost for a water line. They're going to start to balk at that, and suddenly you're like, well, how come we don't have any more space for expansions? Because we've limited our capacity to you know, involve people in that annexation process.
The what I'm hearing from you guys is not have a checkerboard, have a consistent policy. I think the most consistent zoning for that is that R1 designation.
R1.
Yes, all the areas within city limits around this area are R1 and that. So R1 now, it's going to be R1 in the city. It's the way.
It'll be a different R1 though.
It'll be a different.
Because the county R1 is different.
Yeah, and it waits for, it waits for the property owners to identify inconsistencies, like was done with the property across from my high school that I include in here. That that was brought in as multifamily development as R1, because it was R1 in the county. There was a fire in one of those and couldn't be developed under the grandfathered provisions, non-conforming use provisions. So they said, wait a second. This isn't what we thought we were getting into at the city. How can we rebuild this? So we processed that as a zone change request, changed to R3. And they had to bring up water and sewer along with their proposal, and it happened. So.
But in this case, if it's R1, give them the size of the parcel, that's one house, right? In our zone. Well, is it, how many acres is it?
Minimum on water and sewer is six thousand square feet, minimum on water and septic is fifteen thousand square feet.
Oh, so it's more than that of an acre. How many, how big is a parcel, I think?
At at one acre, if you subdivided into one acre lots, you wouldn't have to provide services.
Oh.
In an R1.
I'm not interested in that. Like I said, I just, I can't see why we would keep, why we would keep making it worse.
Basically, now anything in the city, we're going to require that you hook up.
Right.
You know, so it's it's the first step to get in there.
Well, okay, but if if they annex, and there's no, there's no development on the property.
Right.
And it's how many acres?
Two point something.
Two points, so it's, it would in the city potentially be.
They could divide it into two lots and not have to provide any service.
Even under our current regulations, yes.
Not totally. Outside of the zoning code, there's requirements to connect to city water. And that's for new construction. And so new development here would have to plan for connection to that, so the connection to city.
Oh, there is.
With fifteen thousand square foot.
So that could be sort of five lots. Inside the city with services.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. So it'd be fifteen thousand.
On septic.
Still pretty good size.
Guide Meridian. We can have to go, and last week I talked to everyone that I had phone numbers for. There were some that I couldn't get a hold of, but no one's interested under the city council's initial proposal.
Initial reaction, yeah, these are all the other properties. To me, that's kind of another day.
Yep.
So I mean, even if you zoned it or two, without a you know, smaller lot size, that doesn't affect those folks that have larger lots now that stay on those for as long as they want.
Right. It does present the opportunity for more neighborhood change in that area, if that's what the other property owners are worried about.
What are they worried about? I'm sorry?
If they're worried about neighborhood change and a bunch of density.
That's not I would.
You know.
Yeah, over time, as people buy and sell or move, and those property owners change and their desires or their goals for the properties change. Yeah, I mean, that's but but that's change and that.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
It's just like any other you know, zoning change that would come for us for an increase in density. We would look at it on that individual case of what's the surrounding area? What's the comp plan direct us to do? Yeah. So that there there's parameters and guidelines in place that would lead us in those specific directions.
So at this point in time, going back to trying to summarize where we were, like, there is kind of a general consensus that if they were to go ahead, the R1 zone would probably be the most appropriate.
I think I heard that.
And for both scenarios where it's just this one property or whether it's the larger, a larger area, however they might draw that, or it'd be R1.
So so that that's let's put that out there. We didn't speak to any what we think in terms should be the infrastructure improvements that ought to be associated with that.
Yeah, I guess I can, I'm just a little thick-headed tonight, but.
Doesn't the city have parameters for that already now?
There's the requirement to connect to city water.
Yeah.
If you're within three hundred feet of an existing sewer line, you have to connect to sewer.
And where is the existing sewer line compared to?
Or Front John's Road, it's nowhere close. There might be some areas near Bone Road that would be within that. There would be some areas within Bone Road that would be within that, but it would be even difficult conditions and.
Okay.
So again, my thick-headed question is, given the response from the other property owners, why would the city council even be considering annexing anybody other than this guy? Right, I mean, kind of part of no, would we not understand?
Yeah.
There's no compelling public reason to annex these properties. And if the property owners don't want to be annexed, then what are we doing here?
Yeah, I I certainly agree. And that's kind of the, I think, the the key message out there was a recommendation that, you know, it's not 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 timely to make this decision at this point in time. It is worthwhile to take the time to hammer out that policy, as we've talked about, so that it's clear and get some public feedback on it, and making it, you know, not just a zoning, but also to the service infrastructure that's going to be required.
Let's take those as two different questions. The services first. And so in a scenario where we're only looking at the And so in a scenario where we're only looking at the one property that requested. Do you want to weigh in on uh, some sort of service requirement for that one property? Something like the um, what the city council put forward for the whole area. Where there's street improvements, water improvement, sewer improvement, L I D that is associated with this. Do you want to take that on as a recommendation that the planning commission would make? I think it. It's not unjustified for you to grapple with that and provide advice if you want to.
For that one property.
If you did the one property and our basis is always R one. Wouldn't it stay as is until they come back with a new zoning request? And that's when that would happen?
It could develop under that.
Okay.
Too much, too much.
Any new development would then have to key in the new requirements. So. They would have to deal with that at the point of.
As soon as there's new development.
Develop. Yeah.
Yeah.
Which I think is, is the way that. Is the most intelligent to do it.
Okay. So don't.
No, don't. So basically, if, if we decided to, and if, if we decided to agree to any property owner to annex their property, it automatically would go in as R one, correct? That's what we're looking at. And then any development that they were going to do, that's when all of that would come into play.
Would trigger the service report.
Right.
Right, right. Because if they wanted to then change the zoning to R three versus R two. That would be a different.
Right.
Density that would require.
And that's when all that would start.
Right. Well, what, what about the service requirements? For our lot? There aren't any?
If, if they don't do anything.
If they don't change anything, yeah.
Well, that's what I was saying. Somebody's zoning, this, this is a two acre property. They annexed two vacant acres to the city. And they want to build warehouses there. Right? Do they have to put in water sewer in streets or not?
We have to put in water. The waters are in the street. At this point.
They don't have to put in sewer because it's too far away.
Streets.
But do they have to sign a waiver? Do they have to sign a waiver of remonstrance against? Participating in an L I D for the extension of sewer in the future?
That's a decision we'd have to make right now.
Yeah.
That'd be a fine idea to avoid the checkerboard.
Yeah.
That, that, hey, maybe it's not practical to get sewer to you now.
But as soon as it is.
It's going to be practical someday, particularly if your neighbors start to develop. And then you don't get to object to being part of the L I D to build the sewer because. And, and you know what happens over time in that kind of situation is eventually. Opponents turn to proponents, right? I've got this L I D waiver. I got a dispute if I ever develop. Joe next door wants to develop. Let's get together and do the damn L I D so we can develop, you know? It turns to being, no, no, thank you to, can we do this?
Yeah.
At some point when the economics works, right?
Right.
So I don't think we want to fail to have that requirement. Even if we're out of range, practical range for them to build the sewer for four lots. I get it. You can't spend. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put sewer in four lots. But, but. When your neighbors need to do that the same way and build a trump line and it starts to work, right?
So what happens road? Roadwise, what are the requirements? Okay.
There's no future plans to make capital road improvements like Kinnick and Bone Roads and Frank Johns or Simmons.
They can be added to our capital improvement plan. We don't have anything for that that we can just pull out of the, or off the shelf and say.
I was just wondering if there were, somebody had discussed it, but okay.
And then that's the sewer hookup concept. I mean, we. We've recommended or voiced that in the past, so that's not inconsistent. I think that's just. Maintaining that consistency. We have systems development charges for water and sewer, right? Do we charge them to property owners that are developing, even if they don't have access to sewer at that moment?
Charged at the time of building from it.
Right. So, but what about in this situation, too far from the sewer?
No sewer.
So there's no sewer L I D.
Until you.
So they're getting the sweet deal. They don't have to put in their sewers. They don't have to pay. The uh, the systems development charge and, and they might or might not have to sign a waiver. And I think we ought to up the ante and say, no, you do have to sign a waiver. It's probably not reasonable to require somebody to pay a sewer systems development charge at the time of. Annexation and all the time.
If it's not available.
If it's not available. Um, right. So I get that. But, but when they, when they later, when they form that L I D, it would seem like that's what they have to do.
Yeah, when you reach that threshold.
Yeah.
Becomes great enough. Yeah, I could be able to back out there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and, you know, this whole discussion, I mean, city over time has a chance to either incrementally get better or get nibbled to death.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I think if you look, quite frankly, at some of our. Service extensions in the past. We have been nibbled.
Painful anyway, even if we're not dead yet.
It's time to learn, I think, from those lessons.
Do you want to open it up to any public comment before it might be swirling closer to the decision?
Sure. Well, that would be great. Why don't we do that? For anybody on the.
Then you can go to the reaction. Uh, raise hands function or press star nine to raise hand to contribute. I'll keep, I'll keep glancing up there.
Okay, okay.
There's one.
Oh, there's somebody there.
Okay, and then you can press star six now to unmute yourself.
Hi, uh, this is Pat Rice. And I wanted to um. Say that I really appreciated the conversation. Tonight and um. The people I agree most with. Um, are Charlie Hales and Mr. Brechtel. And the reason I say it that way. Is because I think we have been nibbled to death. And I think it's hard to be tough. I know because I understand Mr. Zettler and other people. We want to make it, we want to be kind to people. But. It's kind of like sometimes. Be kind to people. You have to be kind to them in the long run. In the long run, the kindest thing to all of us. Is to face up to what something is going to cost us in advance. And spell everything out. So I really want to thank Mr. Brechtel and Mr. Hales. Um, and I encourage the others, even though it's. Uh, may be costly to go along with that. Also, I want to, I have a little information that I want to share and I'll keep it short. And I get this from reliable sources. I think we got to be careful. In doing favors to people. Because. I'm just going to put it out there. My understanding. Is that Mr. Goodman. Has been going around telling people. That the city better do what he wants. Because he's the head of the P U D. And that if he doesn't get his way tonight, there's going to be hell to pay. And that the reason he's pushing this. Is because he's only going to be one year director of the head, head of the P U D for one more year before he retires. So. I encourage you to go slow. We have a history and I would not admit that statement. If I couldn't provide the name. And the person, the person who had that conversation with him, and if they weren't willing to testify to that. Because otherwise that'd be libel. It's not my part. So what I'm trying to say is in this county, Mania County in Stevenson, we. People have the perception that we have a history of favoritism and good old boyism. And I think we got to clean things up and get rid of even the perception of that. So please go slow on this. Um, I've been debating for the last several nights and losing sleep over how to make those comments about. What Mr. Goodman's been telling people. And I didn't know how to do it, but I just decided, you know, to be brave and unmute it. But if anybody wants the name of the person that had that conversation and they've been bothered by it too, and they've had some sleepless nights. Contact me and I will give you the name and the phone number of the person who had that conversation. Okay, because so I'm not just. Saying that lightly. So please go slow on this and be fair to everybody. And, okay, that's the end of my comment. I really appreciate. Mr. Hales having joined this group. I think you've elevated the discussion. I really appreciate the work of Mr. Brechtel and the rest of you as well. Thank you.
I think we've got some consensus here already, but that's I six again.
Okay, how do I unmute my phone?
I didn't realize that was who this property was. Yeah, and I haven't did that.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I don't think. I don't think, I guess, at all you were saying that we should be inconsistent. You were saying we should be consistent. Yeah. Yeah, and, and I think we're all agreed about that, that whatever, whatever policy we have ought to be consistent, clear and applied to everybody. Uh, I don't care who you are and, and, and it's just good government. Um, but it seems like this avoiding being nibbled to death. So stick with R one, you know, it's the default lowest impact zoning. You know, re- require L I Ds if they're not in range of sewer. Um, seems like that's the baseline that the council, we ought to be recommending for the council, I think. I do as well. And in fact, you know. If they wall water. And there isn't. Water service immediately, you know, that should be at their expense too, as far as I'm concerned. You know, if there's, if, if, if you've got a water line adjacent to your property, it's a hookup like it is in the city now. But if you have to, city has to extend a water line? No. Uh, that should be. Should be at their expense.
It's a property owner expense.
Well, and the justification for that is that you're. Getting a, a large benefit from that infrastructure. You're being able to subdivide. And create more lots. You know, I don't think it's unfair to, to ask that or that it's. That makes anything. You know, unreasonable.
Yeah, man, I don't, I don't think, you know, it would be unfair in my mind to ask the rest of the residents of the city to pay for that. Absolutely, yeah.
Well, it's not benefiting the rest of the citizens. It's benefiting the property owner.
That's right.
Yep.
Okay.
So how do you want to?
Give you what we need.
How do you?
All right, I've got, um, and we can do this probably by consensus. So I've got a, an answer. To. Uh, or I've got advice from a planning commission. To. Zone this property if it were brought into the city limits as R one. This one property. Associate that with a, a waiver of protest for extension of sewer. And limit the annexation area to this one property. Is that?
Is the water line adjacent to this?
Water line is adjacent.
So if we were to vote, that's what we would be voting on?
That's, that's one. Yeah, yeah.
Would you prefer we take motions on stuff like this? I think.
Doesn't require one.
It does require one, but I'm, I'm almost, I almost think we do. And I, and I, and I would like to have a preface to this that really says. We don't see any urgent need to move ahead with an annexation at this time.
Yeah.
And that we think that we should take the time and make the commitment. To come up with the policies and criteria. And working with the county to do that, to make sure that as these things arise in the future, we have orderly, cost-effective growth. Yeah, I, well, then let's, let's put that in the formal motion. I think all four, like what you said, that is, one. Let's have a process with the county for deliberate approach to all this. Uh, uh, two, there's no urgency for any of these annexations right now. Uh, but if they want to proceed with this one, it should be R one. And they're going to be required to connect the water at the time of development. And they should be required to sign a waiver of protest against connection to future sewer L I D, right? Isn't it all four? It's like. Don't, don't rush, as, as Mr. Rice said, there's no rush here. And you said the same thing. No rush here and there's only one property owner that's even banging on our door. So, okay, let's go slow. Let's talk to the county. Zone this R one and, and attach the appropriate service requirements for water now and sewer later. Seems like. I like that. So I, I put that, that makes, okay, that makes sense. Do we have? Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. The post say nay. Motion carries? You okay with this, Ben?
I'm okay. Yeah, absolutely. Um, I think this is really good direction. Complete understanding by law about how it goes. So I, I, yeah, very um. Satisfied with how that went. In the event that the city council continues along the course that they preliminarily chose. Would it be appropriate for me to tell them that the R one zoning is what you seek as a policy? And.
At this time?
At this time.
Default for now, yeah.
You would have many more thoughts on the. Service connection requirements, but chose not to consider that because it wasn't wise.
Oh, yeah.
We just don't have the information to make a larger decision on.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's good. Um, two things came up.
I'll be at the council meeting.
Oh, yeah, good.
That's good.
Good.
Bring your hand. Please count on the table.
One thing. Dynamics of growth wise. Private investment follows public investment. It's a savvy developer who's able to make money off of what somebody already, somebody else already spent. And so. When you see people coming and approaching us now, they're savvy enough to know that, hey, there's a water line that can tap into it without doing anything. And so that's what we're likely to get at this point. We're not, we don't have the um. Uh, resource. Rich people to say, yeah, I'm going to add a new reservoir up above this and extend the lines up above this. So. In most of these conversations. It's going to be, there's already water. That's associated. The other thing that I wanted to talk about that doesn't apply to this conversation either, and I don't know what the thresholds are, but um. The city's hydrant coverage. And our ability to fight fires. Means that as city residents, we pay the insurance, fire insurance rate that is this. But if um, our hydrant coverage compared to our. Uh, building stock. Is different, like in the county, they pay a higher fire insurance rate.
Hmm.
And so if we were. Considering areas that are previously developed, which you're not, you're considering just vacant property that would have to bring. Uh, fire hydrant to something for land development. But if this were uh, bringing in property that was uh, currently developed. You'd have a different set of recommendations, I think, related to that fire. Uh, hydrant provision, requiring some to be put in immediately. So that we all don't pay higher fire insurance. Not, not.
Just keeping it back in our heads.
Yeah, yeah, that's an interesting point. Yeah, another, another. Or a problem that gets worse over time. If we're not careful, the number of exposed properties. Therefore exposure for everybody.
Yep.
You know, the current percentage differences between county and city.
I. The. I don't understand enough about that to speak. With any. You know, to, to communicate anything to you.
Because if you're, if you're. Having to pay less by coming into the city and you're gaining these other benefits, then, you know, that becomes part of the equation into. Is this? Worth my time and effort? And so the fact that you may have to do an agreement. For that hydrant, say. Over five years, you have to pay for that. That, that could be much more easily. A drop.
Okay.
Right.
There is a question. Probably we need to clarify what our motion was.
Exactly. You got it. Sorry.
I have four points.
Could you, could you clarify? Please.
I have four points and correct me because I may have um, reminded in this one. So there's no urgency uh, to proceed with. Large scale annexations. Uh, we should take that time. Uh, we should take that time to coordinate with the county. Apply R one zoning as a policy. And recommend a waiver for sewer connection. In the future, requiring water connection.
For that one property.
And we were in a rush.
And that, and that, you know, I think we didn't include it in our motion, but it would be reasonable to expect us to apply that same approach to any other single annexation that came along, right? If they're in range of water, they gotta connect to water now, and if they're not in range of sewer, they gotta sign the waiver and, and connect to sewer later. That, back to both, went to the call I made in August, you've got those, let's be consistent and clear here.
Yeah, if we do that, then everybody, we're not singling this out and anything else that we would recommend.
That makes sense, John?
Um. Yes. I will review this.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda. Is our work plan?
Yep.
Work plan.
Yep, yep.
So jumping into this, the city council has, um. Sketched out their strategic plan for the next several years, that strategic plan is three prongs, uh, one to work it. To focus on the organi- organizational health and sustainability. Uh, two, to focus on infrastructure, and three, on intentional development. Uh, I laid out the specific strategies, uh, that are in play for, for them on that, and then some tactics, action items, uh. To consider. I noted where my time is going according to that, and then specifically the ones that I'll lead on there, and so I'll just highlight some of those. Um, modernizing the parking program would be continuing, uh, something we started in twenty nineteen. Uh, we adopted in twenty twenty-one, a reduction in the overall amount of onsite parking required for development downtown. And then there are two, uh, follow-ons to that that they're working on, that, that I'm working on. Uh, the first is, uh, creation of a fee-in move program. Where instead of providing that onsite parking, you would pay into a, a city fund that would be, uh, used only to develop new parking spaces, trying to add to the downtown supply. And then the second would be to. Work out the details on some resident parking program, uh, overnight parking program, uh, within the downtown area where. Mostly overnight parking is prohibited. So that's, um, what's, uh, we'd be working on there, I note that there isn't currently a planning commissioner that's assigned to help, uh, steer that. Uh, Mike Beck was involved in the parking discussions before, and he's no longer on it, so, uh, as far as that, it would help. Uh, involve in, in help these discussions. Uh, planning staff is also working on.
Are you running for, for a planning commissioner?
I'm laying it all out, so.
Fisher, yeah. Rare job, so, um.
Planning for trails, uh, working on that, uh, and. With the shoreline areas as a starting point, and recruited Davey, uh, to represent you all in the steering committee for that.
We, uh, we had our first meeting, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and it was a very satisfying meeting. We have a second meeting this Thursday.
Uh, analyzing and developing housing tools, so this is a continuation of the discussion that you all had, uh, in twenty twenty-one of what knobs do we have? On the housing market to turn and make that system better. Uh, the city council was grappling with many of the, the same issues, different tools that they were looking at. And there wasn't a lot of overlap or coordination between the, uh, planning commission and city council, so we'd want to. Um, correct that this time, bring you all together, understand the tools that are available to you, and start prioritizing, just working on, uh, program. Uh, that, that works for the community within those. Review development standards, which is just a continual practice for us to see what's not working about the zoning code, land division codes, the environmental codes. And then to adopt annexation policies, which fits right in line with what we're discussing there, so the city council. In their strategic planning, saw the, the long-term for this to, and, um. Into work on that, there is also their, um, establishing that joint city-county plan for, uh, developing that. Uh, urban area before annexation occurred. That fits in with what you're saying tonight. Uh, also. Things that's, uh, planning staff will be working on in that time is development review, there's an unknown amount of permits that's, uh, will hit my desk, uh, every year, and some of those will also hit your desks. Um, land division. Conditional use permits, shoreline permits, all, all of those are up to you, and so that will take up meeting time for you in. The end of this year, uh, and through next year. At the permitting process review, uh, so this is trying to, uh, get our websites again to the point where, um. Applicants have a better guide of, about how to get through that permitting process. Update some of our permit forms based on the land division code that we just adopted last time. Uh, have, uh, better guidance on the website to, to ease that process, people understand. Uh, what they're getting into, and when they get into it, uh, try to translate the, the code text to, uh, the land, so. Uh, that doesn't fit neatly into any of these, uh, focus areas, or, or I guess tactics, but it does fit into that internal processes and organizational health focus area. Uh, and that's something we'll be working on at the, through the end of this year, uh, before the next development season.
Yeah, these, these six bullets are all. Good and important things. Yes, can we do them all?
I, I have a question just from, um, I'm a little confused again about dates and situation, so the, the downtown plan was developed in two thousand nineteen, right? But it has, but it's still not formally adopted.
Right.
Oh. Okay, and, and is that because there's debate about it, or?
The, uh, steering committee for that got the, the draft plan in, um. Uh, January, February, twenty twenty.
Okay, COVID. Okay, yeah, well, I mean, frankly, I, I hadn't, until you, until this agenda package came out, I only really read a summary of the downtown plan, and now I've read the whole document, I think it's excellent.
I agree.
I don't think it's just good, I think it's excellent. And the sooner it's enforced for the city, I think, better.
Make them blow us.
I mean, it's really good, so. Ben, do you, Bravo, whoever helps us do this. It's a first-class piece of work, and it's a great blueprint for the city, I think. So the fact that it's not adopted yet bothers me because its policy ought to be enforced. There have been a number of us that have been engaged with this, and it, it's had, uh, you know. But it went through a really great process in terms of putting together, bringing the community together to talk about it. And, you know, the, the working group that we have for it is, has been a good working group too. Who wants to, wants to keep that momentum going, I think we've been worried that COVID has slowed us down, yeah. And, uh, you know, it's just a plan, unless you have folks engaged and willing to, to move it ahead, so.
Yeah, I, I'm certainly interested in helping with that, because I think it's, it's very good, I mean, people are already starting to. Implement pieces of this, you know, in projects, whether it's waterfront stuff, or how people are developing, you know, like the new hotel project is wonderfully done, I thought. You know, so people are following your guidance and the, and the policy direction, Brian, even if it's not formally adopted, but it's, it's pretty good. Just as a, as a practitioner, I was just impressed.
Great, one thing I was pleased about, um, was when the steering committee regrouped post-COVID. I was worried that, uh, it wouldn't hold up. Something about it wouldn't hold up, and that it would lead to, uh, a longer new public involvement period and reconsideration of things, and the steering committee. Didn't believe that. They looked at and said, this is, um, something that we need. And there are some little things that could be different, there's some sentences that could be complete, there's some spelling that could be corrected, but.
Yeah.
Oh, you've done a lot of that though, Ben, here in the last few weeks. So the document is, is, I think, been, been polished by Ben, and through, you know. All the stuff they took away from that, from that steering group, and it's, it's ready to go, and I think that, I think the excitement and the focus is, is taken, is gone from. Yeah, we've got a plan, now how do we implement it? It's that, we're going on to that sort of that next stage of thinking. And I think that's what's exciting, just.
And is there an assumption, I didn't see this in the text, but, that every five years, ten years, there would be a, you know. Open the, open the window for maybe we revise anything, you know, um. Like it's not statutorily required, I don't suppose, because it's not the comp plan, but, but, you know.
It will be, or, shouldn't the elements have an urgent.
It is a shorter-term planning, after a five-year.
I mean, it seems like a reasonable, yeah, I mean, when I was in Portland, we were still working off the nineteen eighty-nine downtown plan, and, you know, we kind of tinkered with it. It's still pretty good, you know, but it's better to every five years, let's refresh it, or check on stuff, see what's working, if it's not working.
Like when we started this downtown plan, I. We came to the realization that there've been a number of downtown plans done before this.
Yeah.
And so I don't think any of us. Want to create something that is forgotten, you know.
Yeah, you really don't. Well, I think if, you know, in terms of our work plan, I guess if we can help the council get to a point where they're ready to adopt it, you know, make it official, that would be.
Yeah, um, the steering committee for that recommended city council adoption, and so the city council reviewed, uh, it in its draft form already, and they, uh. Are able to adopt it on Wednesday night. And they, the steering committee, um, in that process bypassed planning commission in that. For these reasons, let's get something adopted, let's not let it languish, and let's, um, make sure the city council adopts it. And then so what I have within here is a, a potential project would be to come back at the planning commission stage and pull out those elements that are. Really the long-term focus, build them into the comprehensive plan, uh, as a comprehensive plan amendment. This could occur either, uh, as a staff effort leading up to next September, to submit by the September thirtieth, uh. Timeline, planning commission review in twenty twenty-four. Which provides that five-year. Or it could be a, a planning commission series of workshops, uh, that develops that, uh, and then the proposal review, then review along with all our proposals, uh, next year. If that's a project that you want to prioritize, making that determination of, uh, where the workload is, if that's a staff effort, or if that's a collective effort.
We're a city council meeting, so.
Here, right here.
Same time, six.
Right here, and online.
Well, Ben, I, I, I don't know that we want to be engaged to the same level that you are. But I don't think we also want to wait till the end, I mean, is there, is there a hybrid there where we could? You know, I, I want to see this stay sort of on our agenda, I know, on our radar, so that we know what's, what's going on. At certain checkpoints, in terms of how things might be developing, or, you know, maybe just a periodic briefing, or. If you've got questions or questions that you want to pose to us, we can help you with. Would be good. I mean, ultimately, this is a broader community. Process, and the city. Can only do so much to implement a plan like this, and. Fair enough, to start off on that. While we have.
Yeah, I'd like to see that realignment happen soon. Is, are they still thinking about making Russell Street a walking thing?
It was considered some when we did the, the last upgrade and. Disregarded.
Good.
So.
I was not a fan.
Yeah.
But make it pedestrian only.
Comprehensive plan tactic, let's consider feasibility and benefit.
Yeah.
Posing now center, central, and lower.
I mean, I get the idea of, you know, the, trying to clear it for one-way street for one block, you know. I mean, if you stand out on the corner of a second, Russell, you'll see about five cars going the wrong way, you know.
So, additional thoughts? What do you want to see us embark on? I mean, your ideas, the planning tools, it kind of goes back into that, that issue that we were looking at. Residential zoning in here, and the broader issue that I think this city council is nice around. Just sort of say, you know, how does this work, and what are, are fact that? Can we get a clearer picture of what our housing needs are, our trends? And our goals.
There's effort involved in all of these, and so, um. Charlie said, yeah, let's do them all.
Might not be practical.
Which ones are the priority, we, we had a long discussion about the need for the annexation, we've had long discussions about the need for housing. Uh, tools and implementing those. What strikes you all as the most important?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to get back to is our priorities. Again, this has been our, our resources, well, our, our times is planning commission.
Yeah.
It's time. Our finite.
Well, given our earlier discussion, I mean, annexation issues, I mean, in terms of where we can help council. Get the clear policy and, and to good results, right? In one case, downtown plan, it's like, how do we help get to implementation steps that are really going to make a difference? And that, you know, that's an area that I'm interested in, as others say, you worked on it a lot, so, um. That one, that one, you know, if I had to pick a couple, I guess, for me, those would be the two, downtown and the annexation issue. One's fun and the other's gnarly.
Which one do you want?
But, you know, I mean, the other side of that, that unimportant, but seems like if you get, if we get downtown and annexation right. We haven't solved the housing problem, but we probably have to contribute towards solving. So, in terms of what would make a difference first. For us as volunteers that care about this stuff, to me. You know, those are maybe the, to my, to my mind, the, the most compelling, they're all, they're all, all six of these bullets are good, park, yes, parks, housing, yes. You know, but, um. Good, you know, I'm, I'm worried about, it's not about Stevenson's downtown, not professional life, I'm worried about big downtowns. And we're working on stuff with downtown Austin. Empty forty-story office. Empty forty-story office. So, the American commercial downtown where everybody commuted to, you know, a downtown full of high-rises, ate in a few restaurants and went home at night. COVID. Knocked that out of the market's car.
You can take that off the deficit.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Wow, yeah, it's not just Portland, it's lots of cities, it's, and it's more American cities than the rest of the world, because American cities are less, or more, or less mixed use, right? We're more of an office downtown country. Work, change, Austin's got a bunch of cool new housing too, but the empty forty-story office. So, uh, you know, Stevenson's in a stronger place, right, because of scale and mixture, you know, we're, we're a healthy town that's got a, you know, that's got a good path. So blessed that you don't have those problems, but nevertheless. The old assumptions about downtowns, you know, have to be reconsidered. And I, again, I think this plan does a good job of that, and the principles in here. And I, again, I think this plan does a good job of that. The principles in here are really solid and, and I don't think it's going to get stale for that same reason. The stuff that's in here is going to make sense in my eye for a long time, yeah.
Don't we almost have to adopt annexation policies before we do almost anything else on here?
Well, I, I think it's certainly a, a high priority. What, what makes me is the discussion we had really before COVID over, over housing and affordable housing and the housing study and the energy and the questions we were getting from the city council in terms of affordable housing and what does that mean? And Covid sort of took the wind out of that sail. I mean, we, we didn't do some of the public outreach stuff that we had talked about. You know, I, I'm not quite sure where the, where the council is. They seem to be still looking at that issue. But I've got, it's one of those things we took on, we got, we, we invested a fair amount of energy in. And it's so languished. And I just, I wonder, I don't have a clear picture, Ben, in terms of, because we had talked about really doing some community outreach to talk about the nature of our, of our neighborhoods and what we want to see in those neighborhoods. But what do we do for housing? What changes might be made? It evoked a fairly emotional response from a lot of folks saying, you don't want to be. And not that anyone is proposing that, but you know, those people feel very strongly about their neighborhoods. And at the same time, we're trying to figure out if we met those housing needs that we should, realizing that zoning is only part of the answer.
Well, I think also as Covid developed, I mean, it really shined a spotlight on a lot of things that nobody had really even considered. I mean, there was just a massive shift in the way that people do business and what people use their homes for and whether they're commuting anymore, which changed the whole concept that we had before of what Stevenson was, you know? And so I think, I think there were a lot of changes that did make us kind of pause and rethink a lot of those assumptions that we had about why things were they, where they were. And I think with, with their the clarity of what potentially can happen with a Covid-like situation, you know, there, there's certainly things that we can intelligently change in that plan. To keep ourselves in a, you know, an engaged and productive path, not just kind of, kind of stop playing catch up, I guess, is the big thing. It's two years after the fact is always too late to kind of make a difference.
I think what we saw of Covid was a tremendous increase in residential construction.
Right. Right. Because people can work from here.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I said at the end of the last meeting. We were planning on retiring here and we found out we could work from home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're here now.
Yeah. And we do.
You start, you start. If the building from the curve in it, it accelerated, it got a kid.
Well, and people moving out of cities, that's a biggie. This is high oil change and people were trying to get out of cities.
So there was a, there was a housing study done that quantified like by income strata need and supply. And I'd love to look at that at some point.
And we talked about that when you were interviewing about joining the commission, that that was a concern here at the commission. But I guess, you know, how bad is it? You know, I mean, it's usually probably the affordable level, right? How, you know, expensive houses for people that can afford them is never an issue, right? The market will supply those with wild abandon as long as there are places to build them. But it's, you know, what's the affordable housing need and how we're trying to meet it? And, uh, is it, you know, ADUs, is it more multifamily? Is it all we vote? And, and.
And it just, just what is a, you know, things that I I think the study gave us some information, but it also gives, you know, a bunch more questions, I think, that we need to pursue in terms of defining what, what is that? And what's affordable? What's the need? Why don't we have any? Because when we started looking, for example, at land that was known for, say, multiple fam- multiple family or higher density, well, there's quite a bit of it out there that hasn't been utilized.
Right.
Question is, well, do we just zone more land for, for that? Doesn't necessarily solve the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's one of the big part of that was, you know, what is affordable, you know, and if you're looking at the combined numbers of Stevenson houses, but then the county as a whole is a, is not a very wealthy county. And so inside the city, there's a little bit of a skew, especially in the last three years of the market, you know, shop prices up. What you couldn't afford in, you know, two thousand eighteen in Stevenson, you definitely can't afford it in two thousand twenty-two. So, I mean, just in that brief period of time, and again, during Covid, a lot of that happened. You know, maybe causational and maybe not, but that's kind of changed a lot of that discussion and made the, that survey data.
Skeezed a little bit.
Yeah, just a little bit more like, you know, like I've said, the, the questions became a little more tuned of like, what is this? We're really, what are we trying to solve? I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing. And it's just if we zone everything as multifamily, is that, is that going to provide affordable housing? And I know the reality.
What does that do to the city in the long run?
Yeah, it, it absolutely didn't provide any affordable housing. It just provided more housing that people that could afford it could move into, not the people that are here. And so that's.
Yeah, you look at, it's sort of the duplexes or the corphixes that have constructed. You know, they're.
Yeah.
They're not a low end.
They're not, yeah, no, new housing is almost always a higher than market, you know, subsidy of some form is usually needed. I heard, by the way, Eppa Provo, not much, but what an interesting story this morning in terms of, you know, it involves nonprofits and partnerships more than just the market, right? And the Jewel School District and the little town of Jewel, Oregon, provides a few houses for teachers. They built the houses and they rent them to teachers at undermarket rents, so they can attract teachers to their little town. And that isn't necessarily a strategy for Stevenson, but it was an example of a non-traditional partnership to produce affordable housing for not necessarily very low income people, but you know, workforce housing for teachers. Oh, that's cool. So maybe those kinds of strategies, you know, some, some toolkit of those kinds of strategies gathered from Jewel and anybody else that's got a good idea. You know, a lot of the looked at now considering, okay, in the Covid world or post-Covid or whatever this is, the Covid adjusted world. Um, you know, a lot of people are going to keep working from home a lot of the time. Thus the forty story empty buildings. And Stevenson's going to keep attracting people to support to live here and work somewhere else. So now what? You know, and, or work from home because you have to look at that. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're employer who's somewhere else. Yeah, right, right. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And how do you add that into the services that are provided here?
Yeah.
Because what services do those, for those folks who need to look for? I think it's been kind of interesting to talk with the folks that have moved in more recently. Their sort of expectations in terms of services in the community, you're not ones that, you know, having lived here for many years, I thought, well, oh, we've never done that here, you know? People have come to expect those sorts of things. And at the same time, we, we have sort of oriented our commercial district in many ways toward tourism. What about the services for the people that live here? You know, how do you reach that balance point? And I know a lot of us shop online now.
Yeah.
But, you know, there are still local needs that how do you, how do you balance out? Because of these changes, it's, it's interesting. It's been interesting. So Ben, I, you know, back to trying to set some priorities here so we can move ahead. I mean, what's your sense in terms of where the, the city, what the city is looking for in terms of the housing stuff?
It's very hard, uh, because the dynamics that we're dealing with right now have had sixty years to gain steam. And they're pulling over everyone right now and we're all looking for immediate solutions to this housing and affordability issue. And those, um, solutions are beyond what's, as we talked about, we can rezone it however we want. That's not going to change the investment patterns of investors. So the immediate benefit of our solutions that we can do here is less likely. And so there are some tools that city council considered uh, before about offsetting some of the developments, uh, system development charges related to affordable, multi-family development. And they're going to continue to look at that. So there is the housing problem is real, it's tangible, everyone wants to fix it and wants to rush to fix it. And the city council is in a no different position than you all are or, or us as the public servants, we want to fix that.
It's one of those, everyone wants to go to heaven, but nobody wants to die kind of things.
And so everyone will be eager to, to, to get going on that. Desire will be there. For, and a positive response from the city council will be there if you guys prioritize that. Um, the um, downtown plan will be appreciated, I think, by city council. Fun for you. And you deserve that.
Well, you know, again, I just don't know whether to have questions with regard to whether our zone is something that should be part of their conversation on housing or what, you know, to what extent does zone apply as opposed to, you know, all the other financial and administrative and programmatic actions that, you know, can come to play there.
This first step is, um, much more of a action planning stuff. So lay out the tools so that they're understood and select the tools that we want to work on. And so that may be something that is easier and then get diving into the details for reads about those tools. Would be something that would take a longer time, so. So as we, right, one other thing, as we, we started hearing from people, uh, the last time around, we, we got concern about retreat canopy. Um, what development does to the, the tree canopy, what people know and understand as Stevenson. Others get concerned about green space generally and so the parks plan that's not led by the planning department, I think, makes discussions about housing easier and density changes and knowing that there's going to be reserved green space and there's going to be an ability for the current community to continue to enjoy the Stevenson that they select or that they know.
So I'm, I'm looking, trying to get us back to priorities, you know, the annexation policies, sort of the downtown stuff.
Development standards are key.
I thought we had a D S program.
Um, this, we contract with the county and we get good service out of them, but we are contracting with a different service provider too, to, um, that'll just have more staff and ability to provide for us. So the county's got one guy working on it now. We'll supplement that. We have a lot of maps, uh, that have been created as part of different plans, but we don't have the ability to look at them here.
So if we're looking at project areas, let's just go down these six. And just give me a high, medium or low. Like what are parks planned?
Me? It's a good thing.
It's needed, it's.
Consider it a top.
It's not to say that these aren't unimportant. I'm just trying to say, where do we put our?
In the scheme of things, yeah.
Yeah, they're not on this list if they're not important.
Yeah.
Uh, if they're, if they're here, there's something that needs our attention. Analyze, develop housing tools.
Yeah. I think so. I mean, we talk about it all the time, but rarely do we get any.
And that's not necessarily a long-term project. It's come up with a toolkit of, of tools, not talking about policy or even necessarily zoning. Zoning may be one of the tools, but, but come up with a toolkit and try it out. Um, and I, I, I think there are some tools that Stevens could try or one, forming some kind of a nonprofit community development corporation that we don't have, right? It's focused on a whole house. But to me, that would be a job well. And then things like waivers of fees and, and, you know, those kinds of, for that kind of, there was some stuff like that, but try that stuff out. Um, you know, in my professional life, one of the most amazing affordable housing things I ever saw was a single community development corporation in downtown Cincinnati of three C D C. There's this bombed out, there's nowhere the mayor should work for than a ghetto next to downtown. And, and three C D C went in there and absolutely transformed it. And the private sector, you know, I'm sure they, you know, they did some good things in the neighborhood too, a lot of other governments that got fixed up. But this one nonprofit that was focused on that neighborhood. So I'm a believer in the nonprofit model for that particular purpose.
Yeah, Detroit, I think, has had something similar going on to try and prevent, you know, a lot of the urban light.
Yeah. 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 So, you know, I think that, I think we and others could help the council and help the city brainstorm a toolkit of try these six things or seven things or ten things or whatever, some other communities, you know, the jewel thing, you know, maybe that won't work here, but, but pick, pick six out of this list of twelve and try.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Housing trust or half that.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the things we're thinking about on the downtown plan, which I don't think a lot of people realize is most of what you see in, in downtown Cascade Locks was a bourbon win win project.
Right.
One of the smallest in the, in the country.
Right.
They're big.
They've been aggressive about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, GIS mapping effort in terms of our level of effort. It's a nice tool. So we'll give that a whirl. Downtown plan.
Yeah. It's got to be done.
In terms of our effort?
I think, I think there's not that much left to really push.
Instead of just adopt it, you think, right?
Well, that and the cop, cop plan amendment that, you know, Ben will be working on.
Hmm, yeah.
So maybe, again, this is a medium.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Annexation policy, just from the gist of our conversation tonight, I'd say hi.
Yeah, I agree. And review development.
If not us, who? If not now, when?
And review development standards?
Yeah, talk more about that, Anne, why you think that's critical.
Well, it kind of goes along with before you're planning for parks and all of that, don't you need your environmental standards? Your zoning codes, your, you know, it, all that should come, it's putting the cart before the horse if you're, because parks are huge to me. But the development standards need to come before you start on the other. Does that make sense?
Not, not completely. And I think parks is fundamentally a, the capital investment problem rather than a code problem. All right, we're not going to have developments big enough to provide parks on their own. Right?
Yeah.
So not very often anyway. You know, maybe Angel Heights could have done that, you know, maybe there are a few subdivisions that could have provided a neighborhood park as part of, but it's mostly going to be smaller scale. So I agree with you, parks are huge, but, but, and I guess I'm, I'm not as familiar as I should be with the current development standards, you know? A bigger gap is, I'm not saying you're wrong.
Yeah, no. Well, the other thing I thought of too, also, when you bring up the environmental stand, standards, if you're looking at developing along the Columbia, that's huge.
Right.
And any place that goes to the Columbia is huge. And so that's, that to me is a biggie.
Well, that is a biggie, and especially since the downtown plan has all this stuff about access the river and embrace the river.
Exactly, which I love.
Do that.
If you don't, yeah.
Then if we're saying this, then
Right.
That's
So that's, that's from my thought process.
Well, yeah, we've got lots of water too, if you want to look at Rock Creek.
Yeah.
Yep. And Correct Creek Curve, Correct Creek itself.
Those three, we've got that shoreline master program that we just adopted. And our next periodic review of that from twenty eight, something like that, the state isn't going to require us to relook at that until that time. We can always pick it up. If we see something wrong with it or maybe see something wrong with that. The critical areas code, which applies to geologically hazardous areas, frequently flooded areas, fish and wildlife habitat areas, wetlands and aqua for recharge areas. That's also on a state mandated update schedule. Similar time, we've got, we've got a few years, we adopted that one in twenty eighteen, so I believe we have till twenty twenty five or twenty twenty eight. Long enough away that I am not planning for it.
Not thinking too hard.
So Ben, when you, when you talk about this, when you develop standards, do you have something specific in mind?
No, and that's why it's such a
Kind of a situation, or is need rises?
Yeah, the we've still got some of those land division codes that we've considered inside that we could look at. We've done a lot of work in the zoning code, we've done some work in the land division code, we've done a lot of work in the environment codes. And so some of this is a response to issues that come up, monitoring our implementation to see if something needs to change. Land division code is the most in need of work. Some of what's been happening is our land use codes. And our modernization of those has outpaced our public works standards. And so that becomes the barrier for developers is navigating through those public work standards and designing their storm system according to the current manuals that engineers can find instead of manuals, which are on somebody's shelf, but not the one that's hired for the job. So that's is going to be underway over the next six months or so, led by city administrator and public works director. And that might give us a better sense once they get those ready for adoption where we have more work to do, but definitely the land division, some of the work that we already started with that, modernizing that, most of it's still from the seventies. It's a lot.
Yeah.
So, but it's, it's not a, a big sort of project per se, a pretty chunk of time, it's mostly as things arise and you want to work through them, on going, ongoing. I'm trying to get a sense in terms of what we say is a priority for that, is it a high or is it a weak? I don't think it's a low.
Yeah, I, I'd say medium. The annexation and the housing tools are huge. I mean that, yeah, those two are the huge to me.
This is good, all of all of this putting more detail into what the scope of work might be for the annexation policies, how much that, how much time that'll take as a commission where we can fit that into our, our annual schedule, the housing tools also fit those in with the other tactics that are underway. And I think that's gets us a ways down the road into twenty twenty two. I'll bring it back to you for review to make sure that you're agreeing with how those go forward and hopefully want to build that, that subcommittee model more like we're doing. So Jeff hit the downtown, David with the shoreline public access stuff. And create opportunities for you all to have more involvement, so that's where
More on our plate.
And she has to volunteer.
As Jeff noted, there is that one opportunity out there for downtown parking, if anybody's interested in downtown parking and looking across the table since these guys
I would be interested.
What happened to the marketing guy? That you
Uh, he was an intern. So he
Did he finish what he was set up to do?
Mostly, we didn't get quite all the way there, but we got a lot in place in order to get to the point where we're at right now.
Who else is working on parking?
There's a steering committee that we had of downtown property businesses that helped us to
Thank you, man.
You're welcome. I was sitting across the table.
You didn't drop your pen.
I didn't.
So Ben, you'll come back with some Yeah.
And so there have been two issued in that time that had a review period. As it comes to the one was Stevenson Downtown Association mural that went on the side of Parkin, it's the Eva Jane Perry Company. Which is historic boat that we've sunk out in the Columbia somewhere around. So that one had very minimal conditions that were associated with it. It is currently in compliance with all of those. There's been a regulatory change to the code since that time to make it easier for the S D A to sponsor murals on their own, that can be planning commissioned for so even if you wanted to pull this permit, they could permit it administratively without that. So not recommending any continued review period of that or any public hearing related to that. The Nazarene Church, which I have which was not issued to the downtown association over this community, okay, the Portis Community Council is issued to the Bridge Church and the Stevenson Church and the Nazarene on the corner of Jefferson and Nick Henry Streets, right by the elementary school. They were issued a permit to reuse their old building, which had been out of service for a long enough period of time that they needed to come back with the commission for the planning commission puts
What the one on School Street?
It's very close to School Street, but the one that's on School Street is the Methodist Church, and this one is across the street, across Jefferson. And so those conditions are listed here, generally they are in compliance with those at the time of publication. I didn't have a report from the public works department about gravel, so they weren't required to pave their driveway at the time of this, it was a monitor to see if gravel migration onto the public street has created a problem. Public Works reports that it hasn't, and so they're not recommending that you require paving at this time. The other one that we're looking at as a planning commission quite a bit was screening the parking areas and
You mentioned they planted some bushes or
They planted some bushes and there are photos of those bushes. They have yet to really take mature and provide screening. And so I you know, it goes to you, when you review these, we just, we sent it to the planning commission first for you to review it to see if this is something that's an issue for you. If it is, then we'll do the public notice and have a hearing with neighborhood to see if it's a concern for the neighborhood by any applicants there to address the issues too. And so that's the one really floating out here. How concerned with you with that are you?
Well, I I mean, it's church, so it's not like you can really go out there and rail too much against it. Previously, if if there had been something that required a buffer and you wanted to do a vegetation buffer, the requirement was that you had to provide some other buffer until that vegetation met that screening criteria. Not just, but and it's some little bitty plants and somewhere down the road, they'll, they'll meet that. So, I mean, the whole concern is the buffer is there to create harmony with your neighbors. And if the neighbors are still looking across the street at something that they felt was objectionable before, it's going to remain that way with the little tiny bushes. That's just my historical take on that. So I don't think our planning code requires that in lieu of vegetated buffering. But I think that's that's not a bad idea to consider in, in a development stage.
Well, and this was permitted three years ago. Right. So the plants, plants grow in three years, usually.
Two year, two
December nineteen.
That's where I have the error, so that
Oh, okay, we leave in two years.
Part of the basis for that condition is parking serving similar development in other districts is required to be quote fenced and there is in the street of nearby residential use. So that was the findings of fact of the original decision.
And that's the common, that, that's, that's the purpose of the screening is incompatible. It wouldn't be one neighbor screening against another neighbor. A business parking lot next to residential or something, which again, for the people who live there, I mean, for them to wait for the bush to get high enough that it creates the screening that's required. I don't, I don't think that's really fair. So maybe that's something we may want to look at as far as putting that in the code.
Just an issue with anybody over there?
Not that they brought to the city.
The public is not really concerned to the city about the operations.
Yeah, we're complaint driven. So unless somebody and, and like I said, it's church who's going to go on record over a complaint about the fact that the bushes, you know, haven't grown or whatever.
Go over there and say, hey, didn't you burn a few things?
But I mean, it goes back to that same regardless of whether it's a church or a business or something like that, it, it should be the same across the board. It should be clear that if I'm going to put this in and it's an incompatible. You know, if, if it requires a buffer, this is what I need to do. Period.
So these conditional uses, do they, they cycle up every next years or?
You have the opportunity to require a review period when you issue them. We typically do. And when we do, we have them all scheduled for even year to Octobers. And so
That's why these are here.
That's why these are here.
Okay. You, this is that moment.
Yeah, you can review them in October, bring it in for a new public hearing, make some modifications to continue the review period to the next even October. Fine tune the conditions to make sure that they continue not to have neighborhood impact or revoke the permit. Right? If there is some unanticipated impact that's occurring.
So maybe just a couple of comments on the two of these, one, I think the policy about the murals about they don't need to be conditional uses is good. I, you know, as long as they're, and you're obviously already doing this, obvious, as long as there, there's a clear distinction between a mural and a sign. That's a mural, it's not the name of the business, right? So cool, I'm, I'm cool with that mural and murals like that, and I bet the city doesn't need to, you know, work itself into a sweat about those because they're, they're enhancement. They're truly murals.
Everybody knows how I built out the one on Napa Cars.
Some of them are enhancements, I should say. Some of them are, but there are not
I really like August's idea of that putting it on the pot shop.
So, yeah, I mean, if there, as long as there are not commerce, then, you know, I don't think the city has much to do about it. Maybe in the case of the church, since this is the window. You know, is a letter from the city to say, hey, just a reminder, we've got this conditional use requirement.
Well, number five on it says the parking area shall be fenced and or screened from the street and nearby residential uses. This condition shall be satisfied as soon as possible and no later than April fourth, twenty twenty one.
Yeah, this picture two years ago, no, those pictures are
And to me, that has not happened.
So they're out of compliance with their condition.
So what I hear out of that is schedule a public hearing to occur at the November meeting. Put notice out to the neighborhood for how they're feeling about that and bring applicants in.
I mean, if it's in your, I hadn't seen that line, I mean, if that, if that was the clear and unambiguous requirement, just because it's a church doesn't mean they're exempt. Well, and I can remember when we issued this permit, they were, they said, oh, yeah, no problem, we'll get this done. I mean, it, we did work with them fairly lightly in getting that, that change.
Yeah, but that one and the sidewalk extension were the big ones that it was, are they going to be able to get this done? They've been very responsible. And the plants haven't grown. They port the sidewalk on the south side of the street and got that in place right away instead of Yeah, yeah, so.
Yes, it's just the screening, that's the issue.
Five bigger plants.
Yeah, well, I doubt that there's water even out there.
Okay. So expect that on the agenda next
And I see we have the downtown plan. We just is this on here for our action?
It is not, it is
Our information, because I needed the visuals.
For the next meeting.
The motion in second, they're recommending the city about this plan. On its implementation. Yeah, would they, would they appreciate that or be
They would appreciate that, okay, I'll second
You're thirding it.
Everybody's seconded it. They were saying hi.
Hi.
Those saying hey. All right, Ben. Bring it on home.
Yeah, two links in there, one I discovered was broken after it worked for me the first time around, so I will find that and send it out again, but it's that is not Seahawk one, the, it's the housing. Oh, good, good.
I haven't tried this.
Okay, the Seahawk one is, hopefully that one wasn't broken, it's this wonderful user interface developed by the Ottoman society. The Ottoman, like the Ottoman which visuals about migratory bird path. And so Seahawk season.
This is about real Seahawks, not about the football.
I'm asking Johanna, since she has a question.
No way.
She dozed off there briefly.
Again, about the motion that was just made.
Zettler moved to
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, recommend city council adoption of the downtown plan for success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Thanks, you went up for. Keeping us on the straight and narrow here and making sure that we document.
Seahawks, you all may or may not know, is a colloquial term for osprey.
Yeah.
And so that pathway or that link on there provides the migration patterns of osprey. Staffing Commission reports, we talked about downtown plan, uh, talked enough, I think, about downtown parking and soon Anne will be giving these reports, just like Davey will, for the shoreline public access and trail plan. Great, um, one thing I didn't have in here, but it's, uh, been working on is putting together a, um. Stipend program, uh, to connect people to city sewer that are currently on septic and have access to city sewer. And so, um. The city as part of one of the, um, it was actually a stormwater projects associated with the, the sewer project on Rock Creek Drive. Had to do some in kind mitigation work for, uh, water quality impact of the storm system and the. U S Fish and Wildlife allowed us to seed a program that we've been thinking about, which would be the stipend program for. Uh, connecting those, those sewer systems, so ten thousand dollars from the city stormwater fund. Will go into this reserve fund, uh, that can be distributed to the property owners that want to connect to the city, so. Have a draft program, uh, for city council's initial review, we're still fine tuning some of that, um. Through legal counsel and understanding what the, the size of the stipend would be that might be effective by collecting costs for what it takes, so. That one is called Healing Stars in Stevenson, it's an acronym, um. Helping encourage adjacent landowners. That's heal.
Who comes up with these things?
Newer connection and reform.
Yeah.
I want to know how long he spends thinking of these.
That joins the Stevenson Urban Mutual for Economic Sustainability Strategies.
Every time I see her, it reminds me of some one of us.
So that's fun, way to do it. That's all I have for it.
That's it, okay. Any other business?
You know, lots of the monster or anything exciting like that?
Two, two links to follow there.
Well, entertaining motion to adjourn?
I'm motioned.
Okay, second, stand adjourned, thank you.
Can I have a que- can I ask a question in our regard, because it's not a planning commission issue? We have our politicians coming to our door. And Summer Shire came to the door and I asked her a couple questions that. Interest us and one is homeless because we're seeing a lot of it driving Rock Creek, we do not have a camping ban in Stevenson. And it came on the agenda, I looked, I looked it up, it came on the agenda for city council, August of last year, nothing's happened since then?
It was also on the previous summer. And there was no action requested, so. Nothing has happened since.
So what do citizens do about that if, because if you live on this end of town, you're not going to see it, where we are, you see it. You also see that poor police, uh, the sheriff's deputy yesterday who, I don't know how long he spent. With this poor girl at the apartments, I'm sure she was abused, her face had been picked to pieces, so you know what? God, I mean, just. If you don't have a camping ban or something going forward, you're putting it all on the sheriff's deputies. And it's going to get worse and worse and worse, and we're going to build these beautiful parks and it's not going to be good.
I don't know how important it's doing.
They don't, they're dealing with it. Yeah, well, and they're on the river here, I mean. I'm married to somebody who cleans up camps, he has hazardous waste or his people do, and it's on the river here. I mean, and it's under our bridge, Rock Creek, and it's, so what do citizens do if that's a concern?
Letter, a letter to the city council, showing up at the city council's public. Comment here.
Okay. Okay. I had a family member who was committed twice before he passed and trying to, I mean, he was held in emergency, he was a health and personal problem emergency for five days.
I noticed the. Yeah.